Good evening. The August 25th meeting of the Longview City Council is now called to order. Tonight, Councilman Tim Carpenter is out of town, but by state law, it allows members to participate in the meeting virtually, and we are glad he's able to participate with us tonight. Our prayer and pledge tonight will be led by members of the Boy Scout Troops 201G and 201B. Leading the prayer and pledge will be Beatrice Nasados, CJ Rodriguez, and Gabriel Jagers. Please stand.
Everyone, please join me in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, bless all these leaders, bless our community, and I pray that everything goes well and swiftly. In this name, I pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you, young ladies and young gentlemen, for coming here tonight and doing this for us. It's always great to see our future leaders in council chambers with us tonight, so we appreciate y'all's attendance. Thank you so much. We are now to citizen comment. I do have one speaker card. Bruce Vactor. Good.
Giving our honor and praises to my God, Ahaya Asher, Ahaya.
Sir, you state your name and your address for us, please, first.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Well, I wanted to respect God first.
Thank you, sir. Yes, please do.
My name is Bruce Vactor.
Thank you.
The second.
Okay.
Okay, now I can start.
Anything you want, buddy. It's all yours.
Woman's death reveals a troubled East Texas jail. Amy Lynn Cowlin's death is just the most recent at the Greck County Jail in Longview. Interviews and public documents reveal a troubled facility. I repeat that. Public documents reveal a troubled facility where the staff turnover rate is unusually high, and inmates report, what does it say, shoddy medical care? Well, I don't want to spend too long on my time, because I'm just trying to make a point. This lady is the, this lady in my hand on my phone, this is the lady of the, the mother of the woman that died in the Longview jail. I'm just showing everyone. This is just one of many deaths. You know what I'm saying? I don't know how many, because like every time someone dies, it hurt my heart. So if I knew how many people are really dying in the jail, it'll probably hurt, kill me. So my question is to you, Mayor, is do Longview have an internal affair bureau for the Longview Police Department? And if not, why is that? And if I can, can I find a way or someone to help me to find out how and why we don't have an internal affair? According to when I talked to the Fort Worth Internal Affairs Bureau, they told me, according to them, that Longview don't have one. So when they told me that, that's what made me come up here and speak on it. So I didn't mean to come and like interrupt with y'all here tonight. My life is in danger, too. I'm in frisk of my life. I have messages, so I just had to get that out, because after tonight, I don't know if anybody will see me again in Longview, because I don't, I'm scared for my life here. If women dying in jail, I'm scared for me, because I've been treated wrong, and I can't even get the tape. I can't even get the tape when they done me wrong. And that's all I want to know, is why we don't have somebody watching over the police. That's all I have. Thank you. And God bless you and all y'all.
Thank you, Bruce. Bruce, hey, Bruce, if you'll hang out at the back after the meeting's over, Chief Boone will address your concerns for you personally at the back, if you'll hang out there, okay? Thank you, sir. I have no more speaker cards. We will now go to public safety update. Chief Boone.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Mr. McPhee. First, I want to just go over our customer survey satisfaction results for July. You can see on there that we had 7,340 notifications sent through our program. And on our results for, on our police officer professionalism category, we came in at 4.71 out of 5 for the month of July, and then for our dispatchers, a 4.63 out of 5. So again, you can see the chart there to the side, and you can see we're staying in that very satisfied to satisfied range, so I'm still very pleased with the overall numbers that we're seeing from that. Also, we are back in school. Everybody's in school at this point, so I just want to remind everybody to watch out there for the speeding on our, and know your school zones and your school buses. Remember, if your stop signs come out, your school buses, and the lights are flashing red, you do need to stop for that. And I just want to remind people, only on a divided highway does that differentiate if you're going the opposite direction. So even if you're on four lanes with a turn lane, you will still need to stop if you're coming the opposite direction and let that bus run its lights until the kids are safely off the bus. So just a good reminder on that. And I also want to remind everyone, we are continuing our pump the brakes operation. We actually had some racing violations over this past weekend, and we continue with the speeding, the red lights, and the loud exhaust as well. So we will, we will continue monitoring that. Kickoff, next Tuesday night, we have our kickoff for National Night Out, and then we'll actually have the National Night Out event on October 4th. So I hope everyone has the ability to come out to the exhibit building this year instead of Maude Cobb and participate in the kickoff party with us. That'll start at 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 30th. And we still have vacancies. I just want to give, read something to y'all real quick, and just as we continue to hover around 20 vacancies at the PD, I do want to fill those positions, but with the right people. I've seen an incident recently on the news regarding the police, and it troubles me. It reminds me that we sometimes are better to run a little short-handed than have the wrong people. Training is important, and this agency provides top-notch training, but the culture of an organization is equally important. We are looking for individuals that invest in, want to invest in our PD mantra of providing professional policing in our community. And if you're that person, we'd love to have you come join our team. And with that, I'm open to any questions.
Any questions for Chief Boone? Thank you, sir. Chief Stillman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. Thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few of the activities of the fire department since our last council meeting. We got to do something unique in the last two weeks since our last meeting. We got to provide some high-level training for the staff and the leadership at Christus Good Shepherd Hospital. For a little, a little while now, they've had a device called a vacuum sled, and what this is used for is to move non-ambulatory patients from areas of the hospital where they may have, let's say they had fire, smoke in the building, or a partial building collapse from a tornado, who knows? The scenarios are endless. But what this device does is it allows the staff to safely move the patient and evacuate them to another area in the building where it's safer for them while we're still responding. And how that actually helps us is it mitigates that potential life safety hazard. The more of those patients that they can move out of harms way into safer areas of the building, it allows our crews, when they arrive, to focus on mitigating the problems at hand, i.e. fighting the fire, stabilizing the structure, and doing those kinds of things. And this training took place over about 16 different classes that were about an hour long, and so we had one crew in particular that dedicated themselves to doing this over three of their working shifts. And they were so dedicated, they went up there at 4:00 in the morning to train one of the night crews. And that, you know, that's unusual for us. We're usually, yeah, we make calls at 4:00 in the morning, but for a crew to commit to going up to the hospital and providing this level of training, that's all over the top. You know, that's something that we've not ever really done before. It's kind of unprecedented. So here's some pictures and examples of how we're training the staff to use this device that ultimately is going to help them to help us in the long run. So this was just a great opportunity. We're glad to have these kinds of partnerships in the community where we can all train together for the safety of just everybody in Longview. Again, stop the bleed training. We're still hot and heavy on that. We've pretty much, we're still doing it in the schools, but now we're rolling it into the businesses. It's just that time of year when businesses are looking to do safety-oriented training with their staff. Chief Hooton here is doing a class out at New Core Steel. We actually have, our next community class is coming up at 6:00 on Monday, September the 12th. These classes are free, so if you want to learn some good life-saving skills and get some good, some good training, please, you can go to the website there, longviewtexas.gov/stb, and get yourself registered, and we'd love to see you there and provide that training for you. So over the past weekend, we traded one bad weather or one bad weather condition for another. We got rid of our dry conditions, but we did it with a lot of rain. And one of the problems that we inherently see when we get a lot of rain all at one time is we have certain areas of town that we know that are prone to some localized flooding. And inevitably, what that means is somebody's going to drive their car through it, get stranded, and risk, risk their lives from being swept away in a flash flood event. You saw this happen over in the metroplex, where a driver was swept off of 635 and into the water and ultimately drowned. And we don't want that to happen here in Longview, so we just want to encourage our drivers that when they see standing water like that, find a way around it. There's, I promise you, there's more than one way to get where you're trying to go. So turn around, go take a different route. We actually try to get out ahead of this, working with PD and public works as much as possible, and barricade and cone off those areas when that water's starting to pile up. And we have people that'll get out and move the barricades and drive through it anyway. And I can't tell you how dangerous that is. You're driving into a water that you don't know what's under it. The roadway may have been washed away as part of the flooding process, so we just want to encourage our drivers to be smart and don't drive through that standing water. In this, in this instance, on Sunday, when we first started getting a lot of the heavy rain, we did have to affect one rescue of a motorist that was trapped in a vehicle surrounded by water at the High Street underpass, which is pretty common. So we just want to encourage our drivers out there to, please, don't drive through standing water like that. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Stillman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, as I mentioned earlier, Councilman Carpenter has joined us virtually tonight, so to accommodate the broadcasting proceedings, we will conduct business a little bit differently. We will vote according to a show of hands. Also, please raise your hand to make a motion as well. If Tim needs to speak, he'll also need to raise his hand to be recognized. If for some reason we lose the connection to Tim, we'll continue the meeting without him. Please be mindful to avoid talking over each other and to ensure Tim can hear everything that's being said. So I'll ask you all to raise your hands to be recognized by the chair, and then we will proceed as appropriate. Okay? Thank you so much. We're now at consensus agenda. Any items council like to pull off for separate discussion? Ms. Ishihara.
Kristen Ishihara moved to approve.
We have a motion?
A second.
We have a second by Ms. Snotty. All in favor? Can I raise your hand?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. It's kind of weird doing that that way, isn't it? We got to do that. Okay, we're to budget items. Consider resolution established in the city fees and charges for the fiscal year 2022, 2023. Mr. McPhee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. City Council, these fees were provided to you at our last meeting, and we initially presented them for discussion. There is a memo in the budget document that you were provided by Mr. Sean Hera on some of the main changes, and the majority of the changes would be for fees associated with Maude Cobb and Longview Convention Center. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or they are here as well to answer any questions regarding those fees.
Any question? Mr. McPhee's, as it says on my agenda.
Yes.
Why is there an extra S on there?
I'm not sure.
McPhee's, take care of our fees, huh?
Yes.
Okay, really. Any question of Mr. McPhee running this, of this item? Then is there a motion? Ms. Ishihara, we have a motion. Is there a second? Ms. Campbell, with a motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Public hearing on proposed budget. Ms. Cohen.
Thank you, and good evening. The local government code requires a public hearing on the proposed budget. All required notices have been posted, and the adoption of the budget is the next item on the agenda.
This item does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any question of Ms. Cohen on this item? Any questions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We will now consider an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022, 2023 annual operating budget and appropriating said funds.
I have a question for Mr. McPhee.
Mr. Purtle?
There's a number of items on here that you listed in your little memorandum that you gave us. The city of Longview is $250 million in debt. Or you can make it sound really good, we're a quarter of a billion dollars in debt. We've got bonds that we could be paying off that we're not paying off. Now, we're going to, we're going to pass this tonight, and I'm going to vote for it, simply for the reason that I do not want the city employees of this town to suffer because of some of the things that staff is doing or has done. Because without city, without those, those members of the city, then we don't get, we don't get the services to our constituents. So, you know, I know we're not going to get, according to this, you're going to try to address some of this this year. But I think it's greedy of us to still go back in and do like the table, or do the remodel here, when we can't take care of the employees. That's, that's showing irresponsibility on our part. Now, like I said, I'm going to vote for this, but I don't agree with some of the stuff that you've, you've put on that email to us, and it just, it's not right, in my books. It's just not right. If I'm not taking care of the ones that are taking care of me, then I'm not doing my job up here, and that's the way I'm feeling about this. And like I say, we've, we've got a lot of things that we need to be addressing besides putting people at a table to make them feel like they belong to a group, or, you know, making them feel like they're part of everybody. If that be the case, you ought to have your meetings over there developing those services, because that room's plenty big, and it's got a table all the way around that everybody can sit at. So I really still have a problem with that. And then remodeling this up here, it seems counterproductive, because you're separating yourself from your assistant city manager as far as you can get. If you're on one end and she's on the other end, that's not as conducive to being efficient to me as it would be if she's right next door like she is now. And what are you going to do with the city secretary? Have you made up that decision yet? Where's she going to go?
Mr. McPhee?
Thank you, sir. So I have actually had conversations, initial conversations, because she had had questions. We talked about a few different things. We don't have a formal plan, because I'm not going to start with a formal plan until it's within the budget. So that we do have some space that needs to be remodeled to be in a usable space. It's large, open space right now, and so that's the initial thought.
Well, why don't you get that to us before you decide to do it? And that'll bring up another thing I've got to talk about here in a minute, because I feel like that would be a little easier pill to swallow, that I would be able to tell my constituents why we're doing this, and what it's going, what we're going to benefit from this. That's the way I would see it. I just feel like that would be a better option to do than just throwing out money out there and saying, well, we're going to do this when we ever get a plan. We don't build houses like that, or construction sites like that, or, you know, commercial buildings like that. We get everything laid out, then we figure out what it's going to cost, and then we do that. Now, if it's in the budget, and we've got money left in the budget later on, after that is accomplished, I would be more than willing to maybe be obliged to look at it a lot better. But right now, I think, I feel like I'm being selfish by taking money away from the city employees when I'm not addressing them first, and I'm addressing, you know, the upper echelon up here first, and that just is not sitting right with me. Okay, the next thing I got, we got a little deal in the paper this morning. And a couple of weeks ago, we had the same similar issue. And I want to know if that consulting firm, one, how much is it, and two, who is it?
I don't believe we've received the...
Time out. Excuse me. I have no idea what you're talking about, because someone explained to me I don't read the paper.
It was on the front page of the paper this morning. It was in the front page of the paper this morning, and I was made aware of it yesterday afternoon. Now, I want to know who that is, and how much it is, and why do we have to do this when we're not, we're not, but even, we're not even halfway through our comprehensive plan yet on this? And the bond, if the bond covered some of this, or if it was in last year's budget that you're planning on paying for this with, or if it's in this year's budget? Now, that's why I'm bringing it up now, because we're discussing budgets. So I want to know where this money is supposedly going to come from, because Parks Department has already interviewed five people, or five firms. They've already picked their firm, they've already made their decision, and then September the 8th, it's going to be brought to us, and bingo. But we vote on it without having any input before then. So now we've got an opportunity to have some input on this. So I would like to know, I'm against it right now, because I'm not for these consulting fees, because this will put me over $600,000 in consulting fees since I've been up here. And as the paper said last time, a few years ago, we've got a rash of consulting fees going on here in the last 10 or 12 years. Some of them are justified, some of them are not. And we're not quite through going through our 2018 bond. We're not even halfway through it yet, and we're already going to want to update it and upgrade it. Let us get down the line, and how many of the, how much of the bond have we sold out? How far are we down on that? We've got other, other issues. Ray's got an issue, I'm not through Ms. Ishihara, please, ma'am. Ray's got an issue with Broughton over there that's not going to be finished. We're going to have to add money to it. I'm pretty sure we're probably going to have to add it to peramont, too. That goes back into being frugal enough to think about not staff up here, but to think about where we've got to spend other money, be it pennies or dollars. It still makes, makes a difference to me. So, you know, I would like to know about this stuff before it's posted in the paper, like I said last time. I can find more by picking up and calling the paper than I can finding out what's going on up here, because staff has basically made the decision, told us this is what they're going to do, and all they hadn't told us is who and how much. So it, according to the staff report in the paper, that's already been determined on who. Now, I don't know how much, but, you know, that just, that's getting the cart before the horse in my books, without asking us or bringing it to us first, and then going out and getting all this lined up and spending money. So I would really, and that's what I said last time, I'd really appreciate staff, including us, in some of this stuff before they start bringing it, and then staff members or the department heads start talking to the paper, or talking to the TV, or whatever, because we're caught off guard, you know? So that's, that's really not the way it should be, I think. I think it should be the other way around.
Ms. Ishihara?
I do have a question and then a comment on the budget. I just, clearly, since it's on the agenda for September 8th, it's not included in the budget that we're currently discussing. Is that correct?
That's correct. The funds for that were actually budgeted in our current fiscal year.
So it's not appropriate, really, for us to discuss at this time on this agenda item, was my question originally. And I do want to make a comment on the budget. I wanted to acknowledge that this is the first time, Rollin, that I have been asked prior to the budget to come meet with you and the team individually to discuss my priority items. I appreciate that. I support the budget. I will vote for it. I think it was well done, and I appreciate all of the time and attention that went into it by you, the team, and the directors. Also, just wanted to note, since we're talking about those items specifically for structuring staff, I asked you to do some customer service training and leadership training with staff. Every, every city employee, I believe, should have more access than we've had in the past to additional trainings, leadership opportunities, looking at how to put that succession plan in place, and that's something we've had as an ongoing conversation after the reorg, putting some diversity plans in place, including succession plans and where those come from. And part of that, honestly, guys, is acknowledging that people need to meet together, build relationships, have those things, and that kind of relationship with each other. So I absolutely appreciate fiscal conservative questioning every expense. I totally understand that. However, I think that placing priority on employees includes providing them the right opportunities, the right training, the right leadership, even as silly as it sounds, the right place to meet and the environment to meet. So I just wanted to acknowledge that I think that was where your heart was with that. I support it. And I think that moving forward, I want all city employees to feel compensated financially correctly, as well as supported by council specifically, and by the city administrative team in the tools that they have available to them, because I want each of them individually to be successful and have a track to be at that admin table sometime in the future. So, thank you. I appreciate all the work, and I'm looking forward to approving the budget tonight.
Thank you.
No other hands? I'll make a few comments. First off, you know, this budget process starts for some of us a lot earlier than others. We start discussing this budget in February, and from February until now, we do a lot of things that aren't public, because they're not supposed to be public. We're mulling things over, we're putting things around where we're supposed to be. But I specifically asked Rollin to meet with each one of you all to find out what your needs were for each district, and he did that, just like Ms. Ishihara acknowledged. But when you do that, you understand six districts are asking for different things. This budget, we don't have a money tree in the backyard that can allow us to do everything every district wants. It's impossible. So we try to put the monies where they're best spent for the districts and what the districts ask for. But it's impossible to satisfy every request from all six of you all, because I saw every one of the requests. And I think Mr. McPhee did a very good job of prioritizing those requests and putting the budget, the money where we have it. Now, I think it's great that you all scrutinize the budget. You pick things out, that's good. But you have to understand, this is a $206 million budget. $35,000 of a $206 million budget is 0.017% of the budget, 17 100s. If each one of us picked out $35,000 and said, this is going to be a sword I'm going to die on, we'll never pass a budget. I mean, everybody has to give and take at this table, otherwise, because no one's going to get everything. No one. Not one of you all got everything. I didn't get everything that I wanted either. You know, I get a little say-so in this, too, even though I don't have a district. So we have to keep this in mind, that this is a, this is a budget we have to divide into pieces. And I think the staff has done an extremely good job this year of dividing those budgets into pieces. With respect to the employees, which is our number one biggest asset in the city of Longview, is our employees, and we tried our very best to take care of those employees from the top to the bottom. And so we were concerned about our, our employees making less than $15 an hour, and that we needed to take care of them. Let me just give you a little bit of information, because it bothered me. We have employees in 20 different positions, 74 employees total, making less than $15 an hour. We compared all of our other employees, police, fire, to Tyler, correct? So we must be consistent in doing that. So we compared these employees to Tyler, okay? That's, if we're going to compare, we have to remain consistent, and in order to be able to compare apples to the apples. Of those, Tyler only has six of these positions. We don't know how many employees they have, but they have six of the positions that we have in the 74 employees. Of those positions, we are higher than Tyler in five of six of them, okay? After our 4% increase in our $500 pay raise to our employees, and Tyler's increase that they're doing, which is 5%, we are above in all six categories. So I think we're taking care of our employees. We would always like to give them more, but once again, that pie has, that budget has a pie, also has to be spread out. So I think we've done a good job of taking care of every employee that we can with a nice increase and a one-time $500 bonus, or whatever you want to call it. So I'm comfortable with that. Do I wish we had more money? Of course. Do I wish we spent less money? Of course. But we have to look at this budget as a tool to move our city forward. There isn't one thing that I can think of, as I sit here tonight, that costs less today than it did last year. I can't think of one thing that costs less this moment than it did last year at this same moment. Well, nothing in city government costs less either. So everything that we have done or are doing has increased. Therefore, we have to increase with it, or we have to do one of two things, cut services or cut benefits. And which one of you all want to do that? Because I don't. I don't want to cut our services, our infrastructure needs, none of that. I don't want to take care of, I don't want to cut the benefits, give them to all the employees, police, fire, all the things we've done. I don't want to cut those things. So naturally, our budget has to go up, and we're fortunate it can go up, because we have excess revenues that we are able to spend this year, because of unfortunate disasters that have taken place. We have revenues that we can spend. So yes, our budget is higher, but we're taking care of the needs of the citizens, we're taking care of the needs of our employees, and we're taking good care and good stewardship of the money given to us as a city council. So I think things are as good as they can be at this point in time with what we have. We've done a good job of dealing with that. So unfortunately, no one will ever be 100% happy. But we have to be satisfied that we've done a good job, we've been good stewards of the money given to us. So, did you raise your hand, Tim, or you just doing this?
Okay. Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah. I've studied this thing quite a bit, Doc, and the council members, and the thing that I think has been interesting is that all of us have a little different perspective on the thing. And I'm really pleased that, looking at it from the outside, is that three of the issues that I did raise with Rollin got dealt with. In fact, one of them got dealt with about 35 or 40 minutes before we ended the session. And, Doctor, I won the battle with Sam's. So I'm pleased to announce to you that we have a $1,200 savings on Sam's. But to my point, had several of us not taken the initiative to go from the one-inch binder that Rollin presented us to the 511-page whole full milk deal, some of these things would never showed up. So, you know, it's not necessarily, and you said it right. I mean, I didn't get everything I wanted, but I sure, I'm pretty pleased with where we got. You know, I have mixed emotions on the table, I have mixed emotions on remodel, I have, still have mixed emotions on the consultants that I believe that we have people in our employ that can do some of this work. I just really honestly believe that we've got some of the most talented people around that can do updates and not be coming back to council for funds here, funds there. It does concern me, and it concerns my constituents and pretty much everybody that I've talked to, that a city of our size, as great and as good as things are going for us, that we're $250 million in debt. And I just wanna see that, that we're prudent, and you mentioned it all ago, that we're good stewards of, of what we're doing with what we've got to work with. And with that, that's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
And, Mr. Carpenter, I wanna just reiterate what you're saying. We are $250 million in debt, but the majority of that debt is voter-approved debt, which means the voters have asked for this debt. This is not something we have imposed upon the city of Longview. These are voter-approved debts that we have obligations to pay off, and we will. And I don't know a single city in the country that can progress without spending money. It doesn't happen. We're fortunate that we, we're, we're fortunate that we have debt and we're fortunate we have revenues that we can pay that debt off with. That's, that's the good thing about it. But no city progresses without spending money. And we don't provide quality of life, we don't provide the things that our community needs if we don't spend money. So debt is a unfortunate part of doing business, but it's something we have to live with and we have to make sure we control our debt so that our spending doesn't give us any ability to pay those debts off. And we are in good position to pay those debts off because we have good financial structure in our organization. So let that be understood that we, we didn't incur the majority of this debt. The voters wanted this because they wanna see our city progress, they wanna see us, they wanna live in a better city, and I do, too. So, thank you all. Okay, so, we're now at a public hearing on the proposed tax rate.
I think we're gonna turn off the budget still. But I'll make a motion for seat.
Oh, okay. We have to have a motion first. Mrs. Shahar?
I make a motion to approve an ordinance adopting the fiscal year 2022-2023 annual operating budget.
Is there a second?
Second.
Raise your hand. Ms. Nadine is second. We have a motion in second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Make it known, Mr. Carpenter voted no. Thank you, sir. We'll now have a public hearing on the proposed tax rate.
Hold on.
I'm sorry?
I did not vote no. I did not vote no.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you raised your hand. Okay, I'm sorry. Delay in the broadcast, Tim, I'm sorry. You vote yes.
Yes, sir. I voted affirmative. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. The delay has got me a little bit. We now have a public, that's, that's a good point. Way to pay attention, Tim. We have a hearing on the proposed tax rate. Ms. Ch, Ms. Cohen?
Thank you. State statute requires a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. The proposed rate consists of 17.65 cents for debt service, 40.24 cents for operations and maintenance, totaling 57.89 cents.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open. Any questions, Ms. Cohen? This public hearing is now closed. We will now consider a motion to ratify the property tax revenues increase.
Mm-hmm.
Reflected in the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. Ms. Cohen?
Sorry about that. When a budget will raise more revenue from property taxes than the prior year, a separate vote of the governing body is required. This motion ratifies the property tax revenue increase that was just approved in the 2223 budget.
Is there a motion?
I'm raising my hand.
We have a motion. Let me see, Shahar, is there a second? Mr. Wade, second?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, Jim. I move to ratify the property tax revenue as presented. Reflected in the 2022-23 annual budget.
Yeah, we have to have certain languages here when we make a motion. So thank you, Mr. Finley. We have a motion in the second. All in favor? Raise your hands.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, consider an ordinance adopting 2022 tax rate, levying said rate. Ms. Cohen?
This item is to officially adopt the property tax rate included in the FY 2223 budget. The property tax rate of 57.89 is a 2-cent increase from the previous budget year's rate of 55.89. That 2-cent increase was approved by voters in May as part of the 2022 Fire Pension Obligation Bond election. The rate is below the voter approval rate of 58.47. Additional property tax revenues included in the 2223 budget and ratified in the previous item will be used to cover increased debt payments associated with the Fire Pension Obligation Bond and as well address new reoccurring expenses highlighted in the city manager's budget presentation. The state of Texas requires the use of specific language to make this motion, which reflects the percentage increase of the proposed tax rate compared to the no new revenue tax rate, not the prior year tax rate. The increase of the proposed rate to the no new revenue rate is 21.06%. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any question, Ms. Cohen?
Ms. Cohen, do you mind, I'm sorry, have I been acknowledged?
Miss Ray.
Okay. Would you mind explaining that, the, the Texas tax?
The no new revenue rate?
Yes. And, and how that's reflected in the increase that you mentioned as well?
How we came up with the 21.06%?
Yes, ma'am.
The no new revenue rate, it's the rate you would use to multiply times this year's property values, which have increased, to get the same amount of revenue you would get in the prior year. So if your property values increase...
Is there any way you can say that, speak that, say that in English? Go back and interpret that for us again. I'm sorry.
So it's the rate you would use to get the same amount of revenue you would last year. So what they want you, what the no new revenue rate, it's gonna be lower if your values go up. So it's gonna be lower than last year's property, property tax rate of 55.89. It's actually 47.82. So that makes that big increase when you compare it to the 57.89.
Sure.
Our property tax, our property values went way up this year from Gregor Presley's, not from us. We didn't, anything to do with that. The Gregor Presley District increased property values to a level where they, where they felt like it was a normal level to be. So when those property values go up, our effective rate goes up because of the property values. That's just, and then that's just, that's, and, and the fact that we have a 2-cent increase because of the voter-approved bond for the Fire Pension Fund, that's where the increase comes from. Ms. Nadine, you have a question?
Yes, lemons terms. If I have a home that's been appraised at $100,000, what would my tax increase be? How much more would I be paying?
The increase was calculated at $118 for that.
Very good. Is, do we have a, considered ordinance, so we have a motion?
I'd like to...
Mr. Wade?
Make a motion. So I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 57.89 cents per $100 of valuation, which is effectively a 21.6% increase in the tax rate.
We have a motion. We have a second by Mrs. Shahar. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen. And thank you to all of the budget team and everyone that worked hard to get this done. And thank you to council members for being diligent in your requests and your evaluation of this budget as well. It never hurts to have multiple eyes on something, and I appreciate everyone's dedication to doing this. We're now at a out of the committee interest. We will start with Mr. Carpenter.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, council. The, I can't see the screens. Well, I'm not, I'm not sure. Okay. Continue with the food drive. We're up around 350 families serving all parts of our city, first and third Thursday of every month. Come on out, 11 to 1. If you wanna come help, you can. Community interest over at the Pine Tree High School, we have a group of young ladies in the, one of the extracurricular activities they're doing over there, painting some parking spaces, which I thought was really unique in our community. They're raising funds to be able to assist their endeavors. Senator and I will be making a donation on their behalf, so really unique-looking art over there. If you get a chance on Fairmont, go by and see it. And last, but not least, thank you all for putting up with my absence. I know this is inconvenient for everybody, and hopefully this is the last time, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Safe trip. Ms. Nadine?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Wade?
Uh, yes, I do have a few things. Just quick photo updates on the progression of Braun Recreation Center. As you can see there, we have photos of the library, the lobby, the game room, and the outdoor basketball courts have the poles up. That picture there is actually the front of Braun Recreation Center, and we have the asphalt laid for the outdoor basketball courts, and things are progressing along very well. At the present moment, there's not an exact date of opening, but we'll most definitely keep everyone posted. And with Longview Independent School District, as we all know, is back to school, and we should all, you know, support our students. There's some back-to-school photos and, and staff. Ms. Nadine? And staff, absolutely. And our football team, athletics is in full swing. The Longview Lowball Football Team is ranked number one in preseason polls, so let's make sure we support all of our, our young athletes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Shahar?
Nothing for me.
Ms. Campbell?
Just kidding, I'm sorry. I have town hall meeting, sorry. Thank you, Richard. I would like to invite all District 4 residents, as well as anybody in the city of Longview or surrounding areas, to attend my District 4 Town Hall meeting. That will be Tuesday, September 13th at 6:00 PM. That will be at Motion Church, which is right next to Passato's, but the address is 110 Triple Creek Circle. And as always, you're welcome to reach out with me for issues ahead of time or bring them to the meeting, but would love to have you there. We'll just have an update and then a time to ask any questions you might have.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to congratulate Spring Hill ISD on earning an A rating in the Texas Education Agency's 2022 accountability, accountability ratings, and the district also received the post-secondary readiness distinction designation. So congratulations, Spring Hill.
Thank you. Mr. Pirtle?
Uh, yes, I've been asked to read this about the historical marker workshop. The picture that they've given me is an old picture that is what downtown looked like at the turn of the century, last turn of the century, and some of it I recognize from a long, long time ago. But we would like to invite you to attend the historical workshop hosted by the City of Longview Planning and Zoning Department, along with the Gregg County Historical Commission, on Monday, October 3rd, 2022 at 4:00 PM, located at 410 South High. We will cover topics such as marker types, application process, incentives, conducting research, and more. We look forward to seeing everybody there on Monday, October 3rd. And that's all I have.
Mr. McThee? For National Out Kickoff Event, join us Tuesday, August 30th, at the Longview Exhibit Center for the National Out Kickoff Event, as Chief had already mentioned. Our Walk Your Park Challenge, walk your park and submit your best photos from a quarter park in Sand坡 Park taken during September for a chance to win a prize. And then Downtown Live, our free Downtown Concert Series returns for its 10th year on September 9th and 10th, and runs each Friday through October. Don't miss this great event. So lots going on in Longview.